Okay. All right, so we're gonna do a call to order and we all do need to put our screens on. Or at least a quorum of us do. And it, the time is 7:06. John, can you do a roll call for us?
Yes, President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Duckett.
Here.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
Present.
Administrator Kyle Snyder.
Present.
Police Chief David Burst.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond.
Here.
Town Clerk John Hudson here.
All right, I'm gonna rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have consent to the agenda we have for tonight? Hearing no dissent or changes, we will get right into business. We're gonna start with our proclamation of honoring the fallen, and that's in recognition of Maryland's Fallen Heroes Day, which was Friday, previous, the sixth. And, John, do you wanna read the proclamation for us?
Will do. Whereas Fallen Heroes Day is celebrated the first Friday in May, and whereas 2022 will mark the 37th annual Fallen Heroes Day observance, and whereas Fallen Heroes Day honors police, firefighters, and emergency medical rescue personnel who have died in the line of duty. And whereas Fallen Heroes Day is the only statewide ceremony in the nation that brings together all segments of the public safety community. And whereas 211 fallen heroes will have been honored at the annual sellout ceremony this year on Friday, May 6, 2022, the town of Upper Marlboro do hereby honor and urge all citizens to take time to show appreciation for the men and women who risk their lives each day when they report to work. Sign this 10th day of May, 2022.
Any discussion? Do. Okay, thank you. Sorry, do I have a motion to approve the honoring the fallen proclamation?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That was all ayes, John.
Aye, 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 aye.
Got it. All right, so we're gonna move on to the second order of business, which is ordinance 2022-02 to amend personnel ordinance. We talked about last time how we need to update the personnel ordinance every time we do the budget, and that this is our best effort to not have to do this in future. Kyle, do you wanna kinda give us an overview?
Sure, absolutely. I apologize, my camera's off. For some reason, strobing.
Yeah, you were kind of flickering.
So I don't wanna give everyone a seizure. So pretty much ordinance 2021, or 2022-02 is to amend the Personnel Systems Guidelines. So this was introduced a couple years ago. We amended it last year, so we're amending it again to kind of further enhance it and streamline it. One of the big things is that removes the, for this particular amendment, is removes all references to the Director of Finances. We're going away from that position in its job duties and incorporating some changes, including putting authorized staffing levels into the annual budget document versus the personnel ordinance, so that as we annex and grow and we need to add positions, we're not amending this ordinance and an annual budget ordinance. We're just amending one ordinance, which would be touching the budget anyways to add funds for new positions. So while we do that, it's a one-stop shop, and we can also change the staffing levels of the departments that are reflected in whatever budget changes we are making. So that is, those are the two big pieces to that. And then there's some other smaller changes as we go through, like adding events coordinator and a grant manager and a crew leader position. But that's, that's pretty much it. So it's up for discussion tonight. It'll go before the town attorney with any changes that the board has tonight, so that we can introduce it at the Maytown meeting, and we'll prove it at the June town meeting, for June special town meeting, and discuss them again at the June work session.
And I'll kinda just say, like, so if we decide we need additional administrative staff with different roles, we may have to amend it because we can't, we're not foreseeing every administrative staff role we might need. But as far as, you know, increasing public safety and public works crews, that doesn't, we're not gonna need to upgrade or update this ordinance for it. The one other change is in Section 2D. Previously, all contracts had to be approved by a full board, which would mean even if four of us were in favor of a contract, one of us could stop the hiring of an individual under contract. And so I've changed that so that it's just approved by the board rather than the full board. So I will turn it over to you guys to discuss.
Just had one question similar to that in Section 4A, positions requiring board approval. Last sentence says, "Applying for positions which there's no board-approved position description." The entire board must approve the position description before it can be posted. Is that saying that all five of us have to be in agreement with that? Or is it a similar situation with the contracting?
No, it is saying all five. So let's, you caught that, and I did not. So let's change that as well, and just cross off "entire", so that the board must approve the position description. We will probably need to, in the charter, when we do those charter amendments, clarify what that means. We could clarify here by saying a majority of the board. Or we could leave it and clarify it there. I don't know what everyone's thoughts are.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm of the notion, if we're doing a charter amendment, to just define what board approval actually means, that that should flow through all these ordinances rather than having to do it each time.
Yeah.
I agree.
Any other comments? There's no public on, so I'm not gonna take public comment because there's no one to give it. All right, we will tidy up that additional change, and then that hopefully will be good to go. And so we will move on to the next order of business, which is ordinance 2022-03, Town Operating Budget for FY '23. And this is the actual, like, up till now, you've been looking at a spreadsheet. This is the actual ordinance that adopts everything. So Kyle, do you wanna take us through that?
Absolutely. So this is the annual budget ordinance that the board passes every year as the legislation piece to the budget. So as you go through it, you'll see it only has some of the figures. It's not all the line items. Those show up in attachments. What it does have is the overview of revenue and the expenditures. So you can see it's broken down by revenue taxes, fines, license, permit, intergovernmental miscellaneous, the total revenues. And then for expenses, it's broken up by department. And this year, we added a transfer to CIP. So it's got the three departments, show government, public safety, public works, and their total operating budgets, and then a transfer to the town's capital improvement project. And the total budget, and you can see those two figures are off by $10. I'm just seeing 439 and 429. So we'll fix that. And then also in here, as discussed, is the changes where it sets the staffing levels. You can see under further enacted obtained, general government, public safety, public works. It says the staffing levels for each of those. And also included in here is the pay step charts for both government, general government, public works, and then the public safety one as well. And the public safety one shows the position breakouts in there, so you don't see the public safety positions listed in the personnel ordinance, because it's in the annual budget ordinance, because they have more set jobs, police officers, first-class corporal, sergeant, lieutenant. It's pretty straightforward. And then it also states the public safety specialty incentive hourly pay. That'll be for the year. So it's like the $4 an hour if an officer is an active field training officer. And hopefully now with some hires, we'll have that night shift differential of $2.45 an hour. And I just realized, I did not ask chief if those two figures are changing in this budget ordinance. Do they look good to you, chief? It's the same as last year.
I need to double-check on that.
Okay.
And I forgot to tell, there was this disconnect between my spreadsheet and I gave it to Kyle earlier, and then I changed it after he did this. There should also be a captain position we're gonna put in here. Not that we're hiring a captain, but we're gonna have the position in there. That way, if we get to a space where we can, it's already there.
And so that's pretty much the overview, the ordinance. And we're gonna have two others. We're gonna discuss for the red light speed and then the CIP. But then, along with its budget ordinance, comes the attachment with the detailed budget.
And this one actually doesn't have a $10 discrepancy because it was done after I gave you those numbers, Kyle, so.
So I can take any questions the commissioners may have on this.
I just wanna let everyone know that I did wind up cutting the committee budgets by 5% across the board, committee and event budgets by 5% in order to keep the balance, the budget balanced.
For me personally, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with the budget. One question I do have is, and this may be some ignorance on my part, but we're discussing this in the work session right now. This is, is this counting as the introduction of this ordinance? Or is that at the town meeting on the 24th?
No, I apologize. Yeah, so this is the pre-discussion of the the ordinances. This is for all the ordinances. Like I said last one, they have not come before the town attorney. We usually discuss an ordinance at the work session prior to the town meeting. It's being introduced. And that way between when we discuss at the work session and the meeting, we send to the town attorney. So if the board doesn't have it, has changes, we're not sending it back and forth. So the timeline for this and the other three budget ordinances, well, we're discussing it tonight. We're formally introducing and taking public comment from the public at the Maytown meeting. We're discussing again at the June work session and then passing it at the special town meeting in June with more opportunity for public comment.
Okay.
That's the timeline for all three of these.
Okay, that pretty much answers my other questions. Are we how I wanna phrase this, are we for the May 24th meeting, are we kind of highlighting the fact that this is the introduction of next year's budget? The, the reason I say that is because, you know, we don't normally have high participation on these meetings. I mean, there's no one from the public here right now in the, in the work session. So just thinking that if there are people who wanna have comment, that they actually have, you know, ample notice that this is a budget discussion town meeting, or this is where the budget will be introduced, have the public comments.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we can do that. We put a little note in the landings. You guys should be getting as well, talking about it's budget season and check the website. We're talking about it at the meetings. But I think I can work with John, and we can kinda highlight that a bit. Maybe do a next door Upper Marlboro only post.
I've been doing Upper Marlboro posts, like a day or two before each of these meetings, saying like, "Guys, we're talking about the budget. It's fun. Come, but nobody comes."
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not saying that it would, you know, give us a windfall of participation. Just wanting to assuage any potential concerns that, that may come of not, just not being advertised. Sorry if I'm rambling. I'm getting over a bit of a cold here, so.
Well, that'll make sense. Yeah, we can make a good effort to push it. We'll do it on constant contact. I hesitate to do it on Facebook sometimes, just because our reach that our Facebook page has is about 5,000. So it's like 4,000 some odd people more than what residents we have.
They get people who aren't residents.
Yeah. They'll get all riled up and be on, but we'll definitely constantly, constantly contact. Where people have to actually sign up for it. We'll do it on the website and a next door.
I think we bring a budget book to Marlboro Day because that's what everyone wants to do at Marlboro Day. I'm bringing one anyway, just because I wanna talk about it.
I have a question. Is there gonna be further discussion or decisions on the entertainment tax line here?
Oh, yeah.
5% to 10%, but I didn't know if there was any decisions or anything yet.
So Kyle's gonna provide us more information, and we have at the end, towards the end of the meeting, I think there's an item for it in the agenda. I mean, here it is.
Yeah.
We will be discussing it later.
Hey, cool. Thank you.
And those charts, Charles, is what you were looking to see. Okay, and then there's expense chart, an expense chart. And I also made, okay. So this was the other thing, kinda we decided was, there was concern that there wasn't enough time for the public to provide input on the tax. So we're kicking off the May 24th meeting with a public hearing on taxes. So that's gonna be like, we'll call to order, do roll call, say the pledge, go into that and take kind of any hearing on that. Then that way, we can go right into the meeting as soon as there's no more public comment. Instead of meeting early, people don't come, we're sitting around. So that's that plan. Darnell, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question about Section 5, Item C. Under Public Works, it says that there is, it's authorized for one crew lead. We were actually trying to move sort of to two crew leads, but right now Foreman Gibson is sort of handling that other crew lead role. Is that all we're authorizing as far as the budget is concerned? Or is that just what it is currently?
So I did have to cut out all staffing requests to balance the budget. So the last staff person we're hiring, or the last two staff positions we're hiring, are that grant manager and the bookkeeper. If we can, if we have more money coming in based on other taxes, then we can authorize additional hiring. But there weren't the funds to do any more hiring than what we have already done this year.
Gotcha. Okay. I have a something we'll discuss offline that'll take care of my concern.
I should've talked to you about that earlier, but we've been so busy.
No problem, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. There is, I believe, one resident on here. So I'm just gonna say, Mr. Mason, if you would like to make a comment, go ahead and raise your hand, and we will give you time to do so. All right. Um. Oh, here we, so we have tax graphs too, guys. That kinda show how the average amount of tax in residential taxes that gets paid and an estimate of the total cost of expenses per household. And then I also created kinda a chart that shows where that money goes. So our residential taxes, almost 50% of the residential taxes that come in, come in solely to pay for refuse collection. And then very little of residential taxes support our police services, government, general government services, and public work services. About 14% as the revenue showed. And I think we also have John's really lovely budget book here. And how does everyone feel about this attractive and informative document?
Yes, John, you did a great job. I really like it. It's definitely much more easier, user-friendly, I would say, or visually friendly for someone to be able to go through the budget. It pretty much spells out all that we're working on and where money is to be spent, and it answers quite a bit of questions here. Extremely informative. I think this is kind of where we wanted to be all along in terms of in terms of having something that's, I would say, visually informative and visually easy to read and find out where all of our money is being spent and additional questions that residents may have in terms of anything. Parking meters, disposal, I love it.
Thanks. And I'm still writing sections of this too, so.
I figured.
Yeah, if there's something that's not described, just let me know, and either it's on my radar or I'll add it. I scared off our resident guys. Any other comments, concerns, suggestions for the budget book? Let's move on to ordinance 2022-04, Town Capital Improvement Plan Budget for FY '23. Kyle, you're up.
Absolutely. So this is another budget ordinance. You'll see it's pretty similar to that first one. This may change because while we have done the annual budget ordinance every year, and it's pretty consistent. You just plug in the new numbers and whatnot. The new, now that this is a capital improvement budget, the town attorney may have some different language, especially in the, whereas is section and different authorizations for it. But I'm gonna let him do those changes, so expect those to change. But it's not really gonna change the core concept of the ordinance, which is the money being set aside for the capital improvement projects. So you can see in here what's listed for the CIP. We have broken down by revenue source and by the expenditure. So you can see that's the list of all of the CIP projects authorized for this fiscal year. There's a couple that were cut and zeroed out. Primarily public works things. I apologize, Darnell. But of course, as we see a shift in some other funding revenues and whatnot, we may see that it was get refunded and come back online with budget adjustment. But this follows that same guideline. It's got the draft on it because it was reviewed by the town attorney. But at the Maytown meeting, you'll see no draft will be a formal ordinance that gets written to the record by John, public comment. And the board will discuss it one more time and then approve it the following month in June.
Any questions about that, guys? All right. Still no public. Okay, we're gonna move on to ordinance 2022-05, Automated Traffic Enforcement Budget.
Yeah, like I said, it's gonna sound like a broken record here, same type of ordinance. We'll see it changed with the term best as he looks at it, because it is based off the, you know, budget ordinance. He's gonna probably change some of those, whereas is and authorizing. There is one section in there, one to highlight, where it pretty much gives the authority of this particular, or the responsibility of this particular budget over to the chief of police and their designated just to maintain it, because of course, the police department's gonna be overseeing the operations of the speak here budget, just kinda gives them some of that authority to make some of the calls and oversee it, so. But of course, I'll have the full support of the accounting firm and whatnot. It just gives them that kind of oversight on it and discretion of that.
Any questions, concerns, comments? All right, then we will move on to the last item on the agenda, proposed new tax categories.
And I can cover this. So I've been speaking with the city buoy, the city couch park on the amusement taxes and finding some interesting things. So they get a large, some of their money from parking planning and parking planning hosted events that they provide no services to. From the city buoy, it's about $300,000 from stadium revenue, Baysock Stadium. And so they don't provide any services to the stadium. They just kind of, that's the taxes for the impact of the area of the stadium events. Of course, parking, planning, police, and maintenance and everything goes through it. And the way it works is any events that are held there, obviously parking planning, and this being the Showplace Arena, which would this most likely affect? Any events held at the Showplace Arena, the arena would collect the entertainment tax as they already do, because there is the state entertainment tax in progress. They would collect that, send it to the state, and the state would distribute it to the town at whatever rate we sent. The city college park is like 4.5% and the city buoy max their maximum allowed percentage is 10% of the ticket revenue. So yeah, so pretty much Attorney Best is working to put the enabling legislation for this together. College Park and Buoy's have had their entertainment taxes in effect since the 70s. So we're a little bit behind the ball. So that's why we just need to get the fresh ordinances drafted, move forward. If the board wants to move forward to this, I guess we need to kinda reach out to Park and Planning and the Showplace Arena to kinda give them a heads up, maybe once the legislation's put together. And let them know.
And we should, does anyone have like a recommendation that you talk to about what percentage?
No, like I said, a lot of it was established way before the people I spoke to had gotten there. Like Buoy's have been in place for many years. They actually received the Baysock Stadium impact money before they annexed it into the city. So it took them some time to figure that, so then they pretty much annexed, the state asked them to annex it in to fix that. So they wouldn't have to pay it back. But yeah, so like I said, College Park's a little bit lower. I would think maybe doing a step program like we did for the maybe 5% for the first two years, then go up to the max of 10% afterwards would be kinda my thought, so it's not coming in swinging. But I mean, we had the Mother's Day event last Saturday, and we saw the impact of a Showplace Arena event at the town. So in talk with them, we may start having to make sure we have police officers on overtime or public works on overtime as well after hours.
Yeah, and I know we get highway user revenues, but that many vehicles has, well, it has an impact on the roads themselves. Also, I mean, our residents are impacted, like we can't get out, we can't get in. So.
So what were you saying, that we let the state know what percentage we want from what they take? Or we add on top of it?
And that's what I'm trying to find out, pretty much, because it's tough. Because like Buoy and College Park, we have theirs already. I've reached out to the state comptroller's office a couple times, trying to get in touch with someone. Haven't heard back over the past pretty much month. But I'm hoping Attorney Best is able to look for it and kinda give us some guidance on how to move forward. And I've also talked to our accounting firm, because they, a couple of their people do it as well. But they don't have a large scale stadium. There's only a couple places in the county where you see this, like City College Park is obviously University of Maryland. FedEx Field's an unincorporated, Baysock Stadium is in the city buoy, and we have the, we have the Showplace Arena. And then I think Rosecroft Racecraft or Raceways unincorporated, and then National Harbors unincorporated, so.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary to do increments, because I just think everyone else is doing it. I just think, just go for it. Not my opinion.
I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Hanchett on that. The one question I do have, and maybe I'm misremembering something, but so. In terms of messaging, how would we square this with? I believe it was said that there was a conversation when we first talked about annexing showplace arena that we wouldn't be levying a tax and now. Is that a true statement?
Yeah, it's a true statement. So pretty much I'd call the same person back and be like, hey, look, we're gonna be doing this now. That was at first, it was three years ago, they've had three years to kind of to go through and we've kind of figured the process out. But that was never our intention to get the money, but since it's come into town. And the events do affect town and we've also helped them advertise a lot, like they said, we helped them advertise their Mother's Day concert and they sold out. Forty nine hundred tickets. So there's, there's definitely partnerships to be built and obviously we, when we advertise, they're getting a lot of the ticket revenue. But our hope is kind of they, people come downtown and shop, but I think we're gonna need to see another benefit besides.
Well, we're not changing their property tax, we're changing, making an entertainment tax. I think that's a different situation.
Well, they don't pay property tax either is the other thing, a large complex that is untaxable besides the entertainment tax.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think the way we'd phrase is like, look, we're gonna be helping provide some services, coordinating with these big events and then help advertising. We can do some paid advertisements and stuff and some marketing, because it draws people into the town.
But not only that, Kyle, the roads too, that we will probably. Eventually has to repair from all of the heavy traffic that they bring in coming through the town.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say and security, I think. My mother went over there and my sister dropped her off and she was saying one of the biggest things that they just didn't have people guiding the traffic. You know, or have enough people guiding the traffic. So I don't know if that's something, you know, the cheap burst, I'm not volunteering you for anything.
No, but they have, they have park police that are designated to the showplace arena. So they just need to make sure that they're on staff when they have an event like that. And they, and they need to request, because they may have a police officer actually inside the venue. But they need to actually have them post up outside to direct the traffic, because they have police assigned to them.
Yeah, that makes sense, that's true.
I think our, like, there's kind of two other impacts, which is our residents would feel better knowing we had. Officer on patrol when there's a lot of people from out of town coming. In and then also it benefits showplace arena for there to be economic development in our downtown. So on some level, they're kind of investing in that as well, which also rolls back to serve them.
Right.
So it's funny that you guys brought this up, because I was gonna decide how I was gonna try to tackle this. In a recorded version or an unrecorded version and we just stay here. I had a conversation with an individual and I'll just leave it at that today about what happened Saturday. And basically what happened Saturday was a combination of rain. Individuals did not want to park in the infield of the racetrack park, because it was muddy, because it rained the two or three days before. And just everybody showed up at the same time. So that was the impact of why we saw what we saw, or if you saw it. Or you heard about it, Route Four was shut down, Water Street shut down, three oh one shut down, basically Marlboro Pike. Main Street, and it was because everybody showed up at the same time. Now, park police. This is just my assumption, did not have enough staff. I don't know if that's true, but I don't believe they had the officers there. They have parking events, parking civilian people who park the cars. So when people are trying to desperately get into a venue all at once, it's very difficult for anybody. To be able to manage that. So whether the police officers from Upper Marlboro were working there or not, the traffic was just locked up. It was nowhere for anybody to go. If you think about it, it is four ramps or three ramp, two ramps and one entrance to get into that location. With all of those people coming from those three different directions and it stops, nobody's moving. I had people calling me, telling me they were sitting on Route Four from Woodyard Road to the, to the thing for over an hour. They got on it, Woodyard Road on Route Four, Woodyard Road, and they sat in traffic for an hour. So there's nothing you can do. The state police was called, the county police was called. Eventually what they did was they just shut the ramp down. And made everybody go down the three oh one, which caused another problem, because guess what? They're gonna try to come in Marlboro Racetrack Road. They're gonna try to come in off of seven twenty five, so it impacts the town.
We had residents who couldn't get home.
And they were literally still parking cars. Two hours after the show started. So, yes, this is a major deal. Getting back to the tax. I don't know if showplace arena is really gonna bring in. The number of shows that a buoy base, if you compare showplace to buoy base, it's not gonna be the same level of events. And that's, that's a concern that if we go too far up, the promoters won't pay it. And there will be no events there. So we may want to go somewhere in the middle. I wouldn't go on the low end, I would say maybe on the middle, maybe five or, you know, whatever you all come up with, but it's showplace arena is not an attraction right now. When you have National Harbor and other places like in DC, now if it changes, then you might want to go up. This is just my thoughts from based on conversations that I've had. It's not really been a lot of. Interest in showplace arena, because one, the location, and it was frankly said. Well, nobody's gonna come to showplace arena early, because there's nothing for them to do. There's nowhere for them to eat, there's nowhere for them to kind of. Entertain themselves and hang out before going to the show, and that's just, that's just the honest truth. I mean, that's something we have to fix, like you said, with economic development.
Makes sense.
And if you go to DC, or if you go down to MGM, you know, you could walk around, you could do other things. And you can, you know, look in their little shops, you know, go stand out, look across the water. You can't do that in Upper Marlboro. It's really in a bad location, just my thought, but you know, with a downtown improvement, we could probably. Get more things there and I'll be quiet now.
And just for figure wise, so I pulled some figures, their average income from. When did, what was the last one? I think two thousand twelve, they pulled in like eight hundred thousand dollars at ten percent, we'd see probably eighty thousand. So it's, it's not a huge chunk of change unless we start seeing the type of shows like that's like the Mother's Day concert and they get that going more and more.
Well, I could tell you this, you didn't hear from me, the Mother's Day show will not be like that anymore. They're gonna reduce their numbers and that's, that's on the top of their list. Reducing the number of ticket sales because of what happened. Right, it's sad.
Situation of all that, and I talked to them today and that's what they said. They're gonna reduce, work to reduce, but.
I mean, I think. I think five percent makes sense, because. We are having impacts now and we do need to do economic development and to some level we need. We need the town, you know, residents, businesses, property owners to buy into that economic development. On some level, and then once that development is going, then they're going to be more of a destination. And then we can look at increasing. The tax. At that time. My thinking. As we do have this other thing coming in October. And that's gonna be a whole other thing with the trailers. Do you guys still think we should go right with ten, Commissioner Hanchett, Colbert?
I say if we can't do ten, do eight or seven and a half or seven, but I think five's a little low.
I'll say I am swayed by the, by the five percent argument, and I think it also gives us an incentive to, you know, push our economic development plan. Forward so that we can. Match that tax rate as we're increasing for the October thing. I know this is, this is very tangentially related, related. But is there a plan in place for ten thousand people to come here and not to have the same issues we had on Saturday? And it doesn't have to be discussed right now.
Yeah, it's, we're in discussions with the county. I've talked to the showplace arena today, the county execs office connected with their. The tourism office who's working with stuff and I'm sure chiefs can be talking to park and planning more. As well to figure all that out and make that happen, because there are some things we may want to do in preparation for that. Like she said, there's something to do downtown, maybe we. Get a band to play at the pond or something like that, or, you know, I mean, bring people.
You can do a food truck.
Yeah, food truck, yeah, you know, I mean, do some specials with the restaurants, so I think do something at the pocket park. I think there's some opportunities to kind of partner with them and draw, make sure they don't leave and go to National Harbor, which is. But pretty much they've sold them to do, because although there's no hotel room, so they kind of partnered, here's the arena. But here's National Harbor, where actually all the amenities are. So I think this could be our opportunity to prove like, no, there's, there's some stuff to do here and more is coming.
What you just said sounds awesome. I like the food trucks being kind of thing, like people will trickle in instead of all coming at once.
Yeah, and we, yeah, we put them in key locations, gotta look at the parking, but maybe we can get the church street lot paved in time and. Maximize parking availability downtown and like post stuff on Governor and Boo Drive where there's, we have seventy spaces over there for people to park. Or darn else chance have an event, they, it opens up their seventy space parking lot, so where maybe people are parked at the arena and can walk over.
Commissioner Duckett, what do you think on percentage?
I think kind of, well, I'm concerned, I'm thinking about, because the. The ticket sales are gonna be reduced and, you know, that's probably. My biggest concern, if they're gonna reduce the number of attendees for these events, then I'm thinking that. It's just a lot going on here, because we don't have a lot to offer, so. I'm kind of middle of the road with five, but I'm thinking more or less like. Five, I'm thinking five to seven, honestly, because. But with the ticket sale numbers being reduced, I don't know what that is gonna be reduced to, and that would probably change my mind. And go up to a little bit higher, so more like eight. But because it, I mean, I don't see a lot of events happening there myself, and I know if they don't have a good marketing team or the team is. I don't know what they're doing in terms of the marketing, that's what I would like to see. What is the marketing gonna be like? Are they intending to have more events coming up? If they put a cap on it, what is the cap? We just need to know what their calendar looks like, I would say, for the rest of the year, and that is something that we always need to, to think about. But if we have a good idea of what events are coming up, then it's gonna help to let us know where we should kind of settle, but. I think that we just need more information from me, because I deal with events all the time and if the number is capped. That's gonna mean that the revenue that we're expecting, that we might receive from there is not gonna be the impact that we want, so. I like to see more numbers on that, what are they doing in terms of marketing and what events are expected to happen throughout the remainder of the year?
We are tracking the events through, we do have in the landing newsletter, hopefully you guys got it today, if not tomorrow. There's a page in there where we put all the events that they're having for summer.
Summer or through the rest of the year?
We have it through summer, because a lot of their events aren't finalized, they'll pop up, because I talked to her today, they have a couple headliners. That she didn't want to jinx, and I told her not to tell me. That are coming in, so they're still like, they're still planning events, they said stuff like an event may pop up three months out. So there's a bunch that they're working on for indoor, but now after the Mother's Day incident, they're trying to reevaluate the ticket sale numbers and stuff like that and work with the. Because some people have certain amount of criteria of amount of people that they'll perform in front of. But we really don't have, it's hard, it's hard to guess, like it's COVID for the past two years, his rec ticket sales, they do have a new team over there. Who are actually trying beforehand, they just kind of the bare minimum graduations and the county fair and the usual horse shows, but now like they've gotten this. They did the Mother's Day Festival, which was the first and it, they sold all their tickets. They's got some other things to figure out on how to handle these bigger events. So I think the, the Mother's Day, the fact that they sold out the largest event they've done in. Decades is a good sign. But I think we also need to kind of, when we do it, we've got to make sure the money is not just going straight to the general fund, we have to tell them. No, it's going into an economic development pot to help benefit everything and. Or maybe some overtime for the officers or some beautification litter response from public works and whatnot, so.
So I could tell you right now, their numbers are going between three thousand and thirty five hundred from forty five hundred, they're gonna reduce it by at least a thousand. So they're thinking a thousand tickets is probably five hundred cars. So you're talking three thousand, thirty five hundred max, that's if they sell all the tickets, so if they don't sell all the tickets, it's going down. And yes, they sold forty five hundred, but they may have a couple hundred that may have gotten refunded, because the people just completely missed the show. So that also impacts future ticket sales. I think the last biggest show that I was advised it was like this. Was the new edition show, which was about nine, ten years ago. They haven't had anything like this since then. And they're probably not doing anything in the future that's big without some type of assistant and partnership. And that's what I tried to tell individuals, I said, look, we, we as a town, we need to just partner with you guys, come up with some ideas of how we can make this work.
Yeah, I told them, I was like, look, we got our church street lot, we're paving, you guys got the water street light lot, the church parking lot. Or not the church, the courthouse parking lot, you can all capitalize on and people can walk across the boardwalk. And do it that way too, just have these different parking options to connect, but. Yeah, so I don't. I wish the Mother's Day concert had been on a better day without rain and mud, and it probably would have been a huge success.
No, I walked the boardwalk last year, I think it was in really bad shape, I don't know if they fixed it or not.
I was gonna ask about the other lights on the boardwalk.
It's repaired, it's fixed, it's fixed.
So that, it's the other thing is when SHA, actually, because SHA is supposed to be doing that this year.
For twenty twenty, our calendar year, summer twenty twenty three, they're going to remove the boardwalk and the road. And they're building a new combined bridge, longer, higher over there, eighty, eighty feet instead of thirty feet. But they're gonna have the, the boardwalk integrated on the bridge, so that's gonna be fun. We're pretty much gonna be cut off from the showplace arena for six to nine months.
In October, folks will not be able to get downtown without going around on racetrack road.
Or for what, for the horse show?
Yeah.
Oh, no, they're not doing it, they're doing it calendar year twenty three.
Okay, okay, so not this year, next year.
Yeah, it's fiscal year twenty three starts in June, but if they're.
I'm getting all my years.
Spring of next, so pretty much a year from now, it's gonna be getting close if everything goes according to plan. Which is why we definitely need to look at the parking options downtown and maximize everything beforehand, because it, not just the showplace, but the courthouse. Satellite parking, the equestrian center, so that's. Couple hundred people a day, we have to park downtown versus there, because the shuttle has to route. All the way down three oh one, seven twenty five. Or we convince them to build a temporary bridge.
That seems like it's gonna be necessary.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely gonna be worth it when it's done. Because it will make all of that a lot easier and I'm assuming there will be lighting there, but we should check on that.
Yeah, they don't have the final design out yet, but I'm, if they don't put streetlights on that bridge, I'd be very surprised, but we can make it. I'll try and get some aesthetic lighting too, is what I've kind of been pushing, like the multicolored decorative stuff. Or, you know, I mean, so something brand new bridge, they have the nice lip bridges.
How, how far along are we on our parking projects for the town? And I think we were acquiring one, we're repaving one. Where, where do we set on those? Will those be done by sober?
Oh, yeah, they should be, so church street lot, pretty much once we get the budget and everything done, we're gonna be just putting that out to bid for. Oh, yeah, they should be. Uh so Church Street Lot, um pretty much once we get the budget and everything done, we're going to be just putting that out to bid for uh. For a paving contractor to maximize the spaces on that. We are actually talking with that with uh meet and hunt our um road engineering firm. They're getting us a quote. For they're, they can design the parking lot, um calculate how many spaces they can get in, stuff like that. Then we're just getting a contractor to just put the asphalt down. Um. And they're also looking at some green grants for us, so hopefully we can pull that trigger in the next, I'd say, three months, and then. The acquisition of the other lot, the Holly Lot, um it all depends if he wants to sell and what that number is. So if we do get the funding in the county budget, we cannot make an offer. Um, and just judging by what the lots worth, that that may be the down payment, and we we do kind of a payment over time. Or another option is just we rent the lot for any events we have. We have an agreement with them, like, hey, look, we're. We don't want to control it all the time, but we want to rent it for certain events like Marble Day or Trunk or Treat or any big events we have. What's your daily rate for us to to rent the lot? Five hundred bucks a day or something, then we pretty much have full access to it.
Yeah. I'm just trying to think of ways that like I I I get the reasoning behind behind them wanting to reduce the ticket sales, but I mean, clearly you have a show that's sold out. I would think that you'd want to try to to maximize that revenue, and if we can figure out ways to either help them do that or partner with them to do that and not put. As much of a burden on the town. Um, I think that's something we could, we could be thinking through.
And if we have them parked downtown, they're more likely to visit shops downtown.
Yeah.
And if we have the dates ahead of time, we can plan food truck to come on those dates so that. People know, okay, when there's a concert, I can go. You know, obviously you want to dine, if you want to dine somewhere snazzy, you're going to go maybe to National Harbor, but knowing that there's food trucks there and some shopping. Um, I think we'll make it so that more people come, like there's options for them.
Yeah, we're thinking about, oh, hold on, sorry.
Yeah, we're all getting, but.
Yeah. I was thinking though, and we need to also make sure that we were able to. Handle that capacity, so we could be talking about maybe even up to like, just say if we went half, if they are talking about three thousand, that's fifteen hundred, and then let's just reduce that by half. So we're talking about making sure that you have something for maybe six hundred people to do that. That's a possibility, so that would have to really. Be some planning and um all the way around to make sure that we're able to handle it in terms of safety. And then um I'm thinking the current businesses that we 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 have here in the town. They're not those businesses that are like, um, you know, other than OTI, that's the primary restaurant that we have that would. Anyone would say, okay, well, let me go there. Outside of that, I know the food trucks, but you need somewhere to be, someplace to sit. And I'm thinking maybe that corridor area that's going over to the C A B is an idea that can, you know, put things out there where people can sit, relax. Maybe even make it especially from the summertime, more like a cozy area where people can come and um. You know, have like shade areas and things all kind of set up for them to maybe music, even having music going on while they're waiting. It could just be jazz or something, having people going up and down that area, but it definitely needs to be planned out. Because right now I don't see that we have the restaurants to draw the crowd, and food trucks are nice, but. You know, food trucks are food trucks. We just need to have something else with that. We need to figure that out to make it really desirable for people to want to come. And spend their money here and then transfer that and go down to, you know, the arena and enjoy a nice evening out, so.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. May- maybe something like a our restaurant pop-up along that.
Um, yeah.
That you're talking about, if there's, I don't know, I mean, I'm on Instagram, I follow a lot of, a lot of local chefs on Instagram. I don't know if they have that, you know. Type of thing going on, but anyone would want to do like a restaurant pop-up with some music or something just along that stretch. Just to provide a little alternative entertainment while folks are waiting, I think that could be.
Tell that in your DMs, Charles.
Yeah, we're gonna have to think out of the box for that one, and I think that that corridor area is probably going to be our best friend. We're trying to get some activity over here and, you know, you know, the amount of people that would want to do something like that. If it's successful, then it's great, because then, you know, it's easier for them to market their events and get people there. Just got to make sure, of course, we have the parking and everything else that's provided. I don't know if people park. At the arena stage, could they be shuttled or if they just need to walk?
So that was a, that was a question that I brought up to them um today. I say, well, if we partnered, why couldn't we get the bus? Um, and use some of the revenue from the events to shuttle people from the courthouse parking lot, the parking lot by the seven eleven or somewhere else back to the thing. And, you know, because this field, I don't think they're going to pave the field, so the field's going to be muddy anytime it rains. So if we work together with them, I think it'll be something that we can do. Uh I think an opportunity that the town has right now is to try to spearhead with the Valerios to try to figure out what are they going to put, excuse me, on that corner? And if it's something that they can uh get some incentive to, you know, help them attract a better. Restaurant or something that's going to be long-term and nice for people to come sit at and not just, you know.
Pop in.
What we have.
Right.
Right, maybe like a Bus Boys and Poets or something. Just thinking.
I mean, it only takes one to to help. You know, kick it off. I mean, you know, you could go up to Heisman and talk to the owner, um the lady and ask her, hey, would you all be willing to do a Bus Boys and Poets in Upper Marlboro?
Yeah.
You're three thousand.
Great fit. Yeah. Yeah, it takes, uh yes, right. I'm sorry to cut you off, Chief, but yeah, I totally agree because it does take like one good hit, one good. And I think that's where the draw will happen, like, and um. And also their marketing, them um the Equestrian Center working with us to make sure like um. Uh uh do you know, just helping them to find out how to utilize their space, too, because they have a lot of meeting space. You know, there are things that they can do. They can create like pop-ups in those meeting spaces. And draw people in, like you can shop while you wait or sit in this area, this jazz room, go to this space that's uh, you know, um. I don't know, maybe uh what do you call it? Karaoke room. I mean, they have space, so they need to, it would be great if they could also. Invest in that creation and that vision to make sure that people have something to do. So it's going to take a lot of creativity, but I think it can be done. It could be even like a sip and paint or something like, do you want to add on to your ticket? Do sip and paint over here. It's, it's, it's just got to think out of the box.
So Kyle, Kyle, to me, it sounds like Commissioner Duckett is. Ready to talk to the um people at Park and Plan and to make sure that they do what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, okay.
Because I mean, all of those, all of those is what I tried to tell them. You know, that we could do if we partnered, and like you said, if you find a the business is vacant and you turn it into, like you said, a weekend. Simplicity, pop-up shops for the weekends, that type of stuff attracts me. I was over at Heisman earlier. You know, it's like, that didn't look like it does now fifteen years ago. And it started with Bus Boys and Poet, actually. I mean, Bus Boys and Poet really. Kicked it off for that whole corridor, and now if you look going all the way down to University of Maryland, it just looks totally different.
It does.
Let me stop.
Janice is, Janice is all over that. She's.
Oh, I'm all over it. I'm taking notes on.
Making phone calls.
Oh, look, put me on it. Okay, I will get the marketing team trying, just turning.
Well, like, be like, why is a Bus Boys and Poets down here? Like, it's June, and I'll be like, oh, well, that's just Commissioner Duckett.
That's a, that's a restaurant, Adam Morgan, right?
I've got locations, yeah.
There we go, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So I'm going to say. Um, what we should probably do is have each department head. Estimate what they think they will spend. Um, per year or for this year, fiscal year, working on this. Coordination um. Efforts and like different things we can do. We can have a conversation about it, and then. Balance that against what would come in at each um. Percentage for um. Entertainment tax. These are obviously estimates, but then we can kind of come up with the percentage that closely mass matches our investment. In time and overtime, et cetera. It's going to be real rough, like I'm not probably going to say let's publish these numbers because they're going to be. Just really rough estimates, but at at least try to see if we can get those things to match up.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll, so we'll kind of, on the twenty-fourth, we'll maybe have a number. Um. Based on that. And trying to keep it on the low end initially, and when we're booming, then we can move it up. All right, should we move on to vacant property tax?
Absolutely. Um, so Attorney Best is working on this legislation as well. Now, this is a bit more time needed um because. It's these uh new tax rates need to be implemented before the date of tax finality in January. Um, so we'll go ahead and implement them. We can do them now, we can do them over the summer, and then they wouldn't take effect till the next budget season, so. Um, but that's for the vacant property agricultural tax, so uh but uh Attorney Best is drafting the legislation for all that's um. We'll be able to present it forward um and what the board wants to do, i- if, once it's introduced, we could table it. Um until the summertime, where then I'll bust through the budget and stuff and pass it during a slow meeting or something like that. Um, or just give some opportunity to reach out to some of the the vacant property owners. We could send them, like, look, we're considering a vacant property tax, your commercial property is vacant. You probably won't have a say in it because there's only about maybe four or five properties that this would really apply to. Um, and it could, they could come up and uh it'd be a good chance to to for economic development, see what their plans are with the building and just start that conversation. Um. And if they don't show up at all and we send a letter, then that's about all we can do, so.
Yeah, I think we, I'd like to make it part of that packet that goes with the public hearing on the twenty-fourth. But I I definitely think.
We can take a shower.
Pause to um actually adopt it. Because I I keep calling the twenty-fourth the epic meeting because I feel like there's a whole lot, and it is going to be a long meeting. So if we can put this off a little bit, then, you know, and it doesn't make a difference, then I think we should do that. Anyone else? All right. It is eight oh nine, and as I just said, the twenty-fourth is going to be a long meeting. So maybe we should move towards adjournment today.
Want me to uh go over Marble Day parade?
Yeah, but there's a slide for that. I have a slide for it. Um, the previous slide was just committee meetings, but there's no. Residents on, but yes, if you're watching residents, join a committee. They're fun, you make friends. Before you know it, you're mayor.
So. Um, that's sustainable committees, meaning time. Uh I think they changed that to ten AM instead of four PM on the fourth Wednesday.
Oh, they did.
We can make that change. Um, all right, so we got Marble Day coming up and uh. Big timeline for commissioners, unless you want to come out at six, seven AM, help put some tables up and tents and stuff like that. Is the parade is kind of the first thing on your guys' agenda. Um lineup for the parade is eight thirty to nine thirty on Judge's Drive. Near the horse statue at the back of the courthouse. Um, there's areas for parking back there, but I would probably. Lean toward if you're able to have someone drop you off um on Judge's Drive, the road's going to be open, just cut through the parking lot like they did when they were building the security checkpoint. Um, get dropped off because you're going to be riding a retired Marlboro fire truck or walking beside a Marlboro retired fire truck. Um, down to Governor and Boo Drive, so you'd have to hike all the way back to Judge's Drive. Um, so pretty much if you can get there before um nine thirty AM, you're going to be toward the front. Um, you just come to the table, check in and and point you to where the uh the fire truck is. Um. And so the parade will run from uh ten to eleven. Um, and when you approach the booth or the stage. Um, the fire truck's going to stop in front of the stage, let you guys off, and you can come up to the stage and sit on the stage. And the other current elected officials are going to sit up on the stage as well with you guys. Senator Watson, Councilmember Harrison, uh the Clerk in Circuit Court, State's Attorney, Sherry Boy. Um, are the ones that we know off the bat. We may have some other county council members to show up, so we're, we're trying to be flexible with that.
I think Delegate Landis is coming, too.
Delegate Landis, yeah, and Delegate Holmes. Um, so we have a strong showing, but it's election year, so we could get some random people, so we're just playing it by ear. Um, so you guys will sit on the stage at the beginning, watch everything, the parade go through. Um, and then once the parade's done, they're going to do the National Anthem and the Wise High School, T C will do the the colors with their color guard. And then the mayor will kind of welcome everyone, say a couple of quick words, and she's going to introduce um Senator Watson. He's going to say a few words about Marlboro. And then we're going to turn over to Councilmember Harrison. They'll say a few words, and then the Clerk of the Circuit Court. Um, is going to say a few words as well. She doesn't get invited to a whole lot of events, but she works in our downtown, so we wanted, she asked to speak. Um. So we definitely wanted to make that happen, so it'll probably be about fifteen minutes of speaking and the National Anthem. And then you guys are able to get off the stage, we'll probably do a quick photo op with everyone, and then you kind of mix and mingle and and hang out at the town table and talk. If you guys want to kind of work out a shift, so commissioners at the town table, you guys take a half hour, talk to residents and or there, you guys can all be there. Um, up until uh closing time at two o'clock, and you get to walk around and and talk to people, so it's kind of flexible afterwards, so. Are there any questions on kind of the day of?
I want to clarify before questions. I have instructed the roadblocks that no one, no matter who they are, goes in a vehicle after. The roads are shut down, no vehicles on the roads at all. So if you come to the parade after nine thirty, they're not going to let you through the roadblock because they're going to tell you that the mayor said no. Um, because we had people driving around in the roadblocks last time, and it was a problem for our volunteers. So I've kind of put my foot down on that.
And some roadblocks are manned by county and state police, so they're going to be like, where are you?
Um, it was, it was definitely a complaint from all the volunteers last time that there were people driving in the roadblocks and they didn't feel safe, so.
I was going to say, I don't think it's, it's just, it's something that's just not safe, and because we hear so many incidents where. Someone that has gone off the rails drives through a crowd or something like that, it is, it's not a safe thing anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, did you guys figure out a dress code?
The vote was two blue, one black, so it's blue.
Oh, two blue and one black, bang.
And uh I'm picking up the uh the polos. For um Commissioner Culver and Commissioner Lot, it should be this week either uh Wednesday, Thursday, once they call me that it's ready, they're embroidering them now. Um, and I'll uh drop them by your houses or tell them that they're they're at town hall ready to go.
I'm glad. Some fun happening at town hall with like sorting through stuff if anyone's interested in stopping by.
Oh, repeat that. Can you repeat that, Sarah?
Fun sorting and like figuring out what's what and packing, you know, if if you're into that, you can stop by town hall over the next two days.
Uh and what are we sorting?
Giveaways, uh things pretty much, uh we took, we had event stuff spread between like the Public Works cargo trailer and the cert trailer. So we pretty much emptied all the event stuff into the conference room, and we're figuring out like what we throw away, what we're bringing down to Marlboro all day, what we're. Whatever we are bringing down to Marlboro, they were putting in the cert trailer, because we're only bringing one trailer. Um, so the the conference room is kind of a mess. Um, but we'll be mainly doing that tomorrow, I think, tomorrow and Thursday, loading everything up in the trailers, and that way it's one less thing to do Friday.
Yeah, what's the rainy day? Was, uh was, am I missing answers here?
It's the twenty-first, technically. Um, we're pretty much trying to move forward, even if it's raining, as long as it's not thunder, lightning, heavy delusion.
Really?
Yeah, because it's, the rain date is also calling for rain. Um.
And it's the day of the referendum for annexation area three. And it's the day of the referendum for annexation area three, which, um, because our policy puts it to the next Saturday, but.
And a couple of the vendors have said that they won't, they're not able to make the following week, so, um.
So they can make it a week that is rain, they will, they're willing to come out in the rain.
Yeah, they understand, yeah, they're all bringing pop-up tents, they, they're veteran event people, I guess.
But it's not gonna rain.
Yeah, I hope not, but, you know, contingency, contingency, let me, how many vendors do we have?
Uh, we have forty-eight spaces taken up by like thirty-some vendors. Um, so we're shy about ten spaces, which is fine, because we actually had a couple more like government nonprofit booths sign up and stuff, so. With sixty, we were really packing them in like, like sardines, fifty is a more comfortable number for us, honestly, um.
And let me ask you, where, where, are they gonna be set up around Governor Bowie Drive, or is it down Main Street?
Yeah, it's all on Governor and Blue Drive, um, so they're pretty much, each vendor has a, a parking meter space, if that makes sense, a couple of them have signed up for two. And the food trucks, we have five food trucks, each food truck, it's like a space and a half, just because of how big they are. Um, so everything's on Governor and Blue Drive, the only thing on Main Street is the parade. Um, just because it's our first year back after COVID, we didn't want to stretch the volunteers and the staff too far.
Yeah.
Um.
But also, Main Street businesses, after the last one complained about Main Street being shut down, but when I went out to say Main Street wasn't being shut down, people were disappointed. So, we're gonna do a business survey and find out what everyone, the most people want.
I like Governor Bluey Drive because it keeps it centralized, and it's easy, it seems, uh, to isolate the area with.
Very scenic with the pond backdrop.
Yeah. Hopefully people will be encouraged to bring their, you know, um. Pull out cha- their chairs, they pop up, you know, like, and things like that, but anyway. So. Yeah.
We'll just do a charter amendment that allows the mayor to control the weather, so that we never have problems with rain in future, right?
Yeah, it says forty percent on Friday, fifty percent on Saturday.
So, but we have, uh, we have tents for all the town stuff, all the vendors are being encouraged to get a tent, um. Yeah, but we also have a lot of entertainers too, we actually had to cut the entertainment time down. Because when Raina lined everything up, she's like, this is gonna go on till three thirty, so we had to cut setup time and cut performance time down, so we could get a very diverse range.
I want to thank you all for your hard work on that, Kyle, Chief, and Staff, and John, and, oh, everyone. The Darnell, everyone that's participating and working so hard to make that happen. It was a lot of work.
It is, they all know what they're doing, I come in and say, oh my gosh, what's happening, and they say, it's fine, we got it all covered, and they do.
I bet.
All right, shall we adjourn? All right, I saw nodding heads, so.
Don't move.
Call this meeting to a close at eight nineteen, see you guys Saturday.
Tonight, thank you.